Alright, welcome back to the continuation of Tales of the Shire. Alrighty, let ' s go return to Lily Cotton. Where am I going, Bertie? That way. Alright. Up we go. Too bad they didn ' t add voices. Do you reckon, Orlo? Yeah. This way. Look how pretty that looks. Alright, the green dragon. Okay, he is possibly in the kitchen. Okay. No, that ' s Orla. What does Orla want? Alright, I ' ll go to him in a minute. Yeah, you are. Hmm. What can I do for you? About those meals? I finished cooking. I could smell that fine flavor halfway towards Hobbiton. You ' ve done really well, Catlove. Keep getting those textures right. Keep practicing and you ' ll be a cook worthy of Bywater in no time. I got some maize and beans. And maybe one or something. Is there anything else I can help you with, Catlove? Goodbye. Goodbye, Catlove. It ' s always lovely to see you. She ' s so sweet. Okay. Now, where did Orla go? Here he is. Good to see you. When will we hear back from the assessor? Don ' t worry, Cat. I ' ll tell you the moment the letter arrives. But it might take a few days. Okay? Too much brown, prefer green. I wish we could talk to the people or do something. There ' s it for a tavern, it ' s not not much is going on in here. They ' re all just kind of standing around. No sounds. Nobody ' s eating, nobody ' s drinking. See? Why aren ' t they doing anything? They ' re just standing. Makes it feel not real. I don ' t know who she is and they won ' t let me talk to her. Hmm. Okay. It ' s getting dark. I guess we should go home. Will I ever remember my way home? I don ' t know. Let ' s go this way. I wonder if we can fish. Kind of late though, huh? Let ' s try it anyway. Okay. Okay. Space and then hold. Okay. Alright. I ' ll keep you. Okay. 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 Let ' s go home. Time to sleep. Ta- dong. A rocking chair? Okay. Rotate. Put that right in front of the fireplace here a little bit. That ' s kind of cute, right? Like that. Maybe another one over here. That. Okay, let ' s go tab. How about if we pick you up and move you to here? How about we move you A little over more. You ' re not blocking my door. Thanks. Here we go. Here. Confirm. Continue. All right. Another day, Friday, eight days left in summer. In the Shire. Bywater Village campaign. All right, tail updated. Shall we look? Check my post office box. Okay. Got here. Think you ' re okay, actually. Okay. Get rid of that. Do we have any scenes in here? Our postbox. The mail. Let ' s see. Requesting your presence. From Farmer Cotton. Dear Twofoot, please come to the Ivy Bush Inn for a big village meeting crossed out. Make sure you use capital letters for that Orla big village meeting. Did you hear the Shire Assessor ' s judgment read out? Be there to hear the Bywater, Bywaters a village and the sea sandy men look like complete fools. Get there early for a good view. Ha ha ha. You ' d better take out that bit about sandy man. Okay. Opportunity conditions apply. Chat from Hobson Hornblower. Have I got an opportunity for you. I have something of great value, but only for my closest friends. Buy now while stocks last. Remember, Hobson ' s latest bargains are not available in any shops. In need of a cure. From Fosco. Hello, Cat. I ' m sorry to ask, but I ' d want a bit of a sniffle. A little cure could be very useful. Delphinium might help. If you ' re busy, don ' t worry. Just a thought. Okay. So, attend the meeting at the Ivy Bush. Alright, this way. Yes, yes. Alright, let ' s go. Hello, Ducky. Delphinia ' s own cures. Oh wait, did you want me to go that way? You did. Great East Road. This way. Alright. Here we go. Is this the assessor? I think. I ' d just like to say how glad I am to see all of you. Now, don ' t want to make a big speech, but he does. That makes a change, says Sandy Man. I ' d like to say how glad I am to see most of you. Get on with it, Cotton. The fish will have died of old age by the time you finish. That ' s not very nice of you, Mister Nokes. I ' d rather the fish did die of old age. Thank you very much. Some people should mind their own business. Let ' s not have any arguing. We ' re supposed to be coming together as one village. It ' s not going well, is it? Do you know what will make you feel happier? Buying things. I have some excellent bargains with me today. Hmm. Really? What do we got? No, you don ' t, Cotton. We ' ve got enough Hobson ' s treasures cluttering up the farm as it is. Did we hear Orla ' s announcement? Well said, Hobbit. We want to know once and for all if Bywater is officially a village. We have taken matters to the very top to the Shire Assessor at Mitchell Delving. He knows everything about being a village, and he has given it careful consideration. There are none wiser than he. Orla, announce the findings of the official assessor, please. Bywater is not a village. Why? Bywater is not a village. I heard you the first time. Show me the letter. But you can ' t read. Then show it to someone who can. That assessor ' s a blithering idiot. You said there was none wiser than he. There ' s been a terrible mistake. No, there hasn ' t. The only mistake around here, Cotton, is that you thought you could get one up on me. I ' m going back to my mill, Hobbiton Mill. Some of us have work to do. The Cottons and the Sandymans have never seen eye to eye. This isn ' t personal. Well, it is a bit, but more importantly, it ' s about Bywater. It ' s where we live. Hmm. We ' ve loved this place ever since we were children. Its woods and streams are our home. And we want it to be your home too, Cat. That book of rules told us all the things a place needs to be called a village. If we do everything the rules say, this assessor will have to change his mind. We need to get him to come here in person and see for himself. Agreed. So, what ' s in the rules, Nora? We need to set up some clubs. So hobbits can learn new skills. Easily done. Let ' s get started. Hold on, we need to hang a wolf ' s head over our village gate. A what? There ' s been no wolves in the Shire for years. There ' s no wolf ' s head as you walk into Hobbiton. There ' s just Sandy Man ' s mill. Sandy Man ' s ugly enough to scare anyone. Anything else? Yes, if you see a goblin, you must report it to the king. Goblins in Bywater? Since when have there been goblins in Bywater? I can ' t say I ' ve seen a king around here lately either. These rules might be a bit out of date. They ' re all we have, Willow. We can make a start with these clubs, but we need some hobbits to run them. Whatever we have to do, we ' ll make it work. That ' s the spirit, hobbits. Let ' s work together and do what needs to be done to make Bywater a village. Which it is already. Alright. Wait to hear back about the village campaign. Okidok. So. He has a bargain for me, right? Alright, let ' s go look. Oh, I got a shallot. Party vegetable. Okay, where am I going? This place is new. I don ' t think we ' ve been down here before. This is cool. Look at him strutting his stuff. Oh, what ' s this? Oh, it goes right up there. So cute. Very, very cute. The Ivy Bush Inn. I don ' t really see an inn. The Ivy Bush Inn. Oh, it looks like they could put on like a little show over here. With the little benches and stuff. Ah, nice. Alright. Let ' s see. What do I need? Where am I going? Birdie, birdie, where am I going? This way? Aha. Hobson. Hobson Hornblower, bless my bargains, you ' re here. I got your letter. You said there was a bargain only for me. Could I say what it was? You said it was a once in a lifetime opportunity. Can you narrow it down a bit more? How many once in a lifetime opportunities do you have? Eh, lots. Okay, so what is the big offer? Not so loud, cat, two foot. I must ask you if you could show your excitement. You might cry out with joy, but how to contain yourself? Behold, it ' s a fork. Exactly. Crafted by the dwarves in their mines deep below the ground. It looks quite ordinary to me. Exactly. That ' s what ' s so good about it. Not right now, Hobson. This is just the first part of a complete dwarven dining set. Knives, forks, spoons? Uh. Perhaps next month. Uh teaspoons, dessert spoons, more spoons? Uh I ' m not interested. With the absurdly low price of one silver penny a week, you will, over time build up a collection of cutlery that will amaze and astound your friends. And who can ' t afford one silver penny a week? It ' s a steal. Bye, Hobson. Wait, wait, my friend. You misunderstood me. I don ' t want you to buy anything. It very much sounded like you did. I know that as a hobbit living on their own, you have no need for such a wide range of enchantingly mismatched cutlery. No, these are for the bigger families here, but urgent business beyond Bywater summons me. I cannot tarry. I ' m asking you to sell these on my behalf. You know, the hobbits here, they trust you. I trust you. We all trust you. But don ' t deny those hardworking families the opportunity of a lifetime. Uh, what if they don ' t want to buy it? Then sadly the opportunity will pass them by. As the old saying goes, you can bring a hobbit to a crossroads, but you cannot make them boil a kettle without an onion. Pardon? It ' s something like that. Good luck, Cat Twofoot. May fortune follow you. Farewell. Try Sandy Man first. He ' s got pennies spilling out of his ears. Uh, failing that. Fine, Farmer Cotton, but make sure his wife isn ' t around. Again, farewell. Do I really have to try and sell his stuff? No. Are you kidding me? Let ' s go talk to Delphi. Alright. All the way over there. Alright, let ' s go. This way. This way. This way. Hello, Piggy. This way. And this way over the little babbling brook. So cute. Okay. This way. This way. Alright. Over the little tree bridge. Alright. I don ' t think I ' m ever going to learn my way around. This way. Up here. I see you. Whoopsie. Let ' s go this way. Can I help you with something? Help me cure Fosco ' s sniffle. A sniffle? I know just the thing. Or rather, my mother knew just the thing. She was a great healer, you know. I asked her once, are you magic? Is that why you can cure everyone? I was only little. I told her then and there that I wanted to be a healer, just like her. She could cure anyone. She was famous for it. Anyone but herself. Are you alright, Delphi? He looks very sad. Yes, Cat. I ' m just a bit sad. We should get this cure for Fosco. Now, I remember that all we need is a herb. I can find that for you. Which herb? I ' m not sure. Why don ' t you collect three herbs? One of them will do the job for certain. Alright, Delphi. I ' ll look now. I ' m gonna take you. You. Pepperwort. Get some chanterelles over here. Go. Raspberries. I don ' t know where the um. They ' re over there. Alright, do I get in there? How do I get in there? It ' s very cute over here. Anything else? No. I saw where they went. But I can ' t get past it. Maybe I can go around. Okay. Oh, no, I can ' t. Or I can ' t right now. There. Find Delphinia. Alright. Currents, we found currents. Yay. Okay. Let ' s go back this way. Here we go. This way. Where did Delphi go? Guess I went the wrong way again. This way. Hope you know where you ' re going, bird. You do. Okay, you ' re all the way over. And we ' re here. This way. There you are. Can I help you with something? I have the herbs. Here we go. Here we go. Thank you. I ' ll just make these up. Into some tinctures for Fusco. There we go. I ' ll ask Orla to deliver it once it cools. And this will definitely work? Oh, yes. Probably. Did you check in on him later? Alright. Go check on Fusco. Okay. Which way, birdies? This way. Oh. There ' s a chestnut or something up here. Or hazelnut? Hazelnut. Hey. It ' s not the right way. This way. Okay. This way. Um. Where are two birds? Birdies. Birdies. That way, I see you. Oh. I ' ll take that. If we ' re on this way? Alright. Wait. Found you. A stone bridge? You don ' t see many of them in the Shire. Made by the dwarves. These stones look old. It ' s just like the Brandywine Bridge. Made by the dwarves? It must be. They built the Great East Road. And they still travel from the Blue Mountains to the Misty Mountains. I wonder if I ' ll meet a dwarf. Go check on Fusco. Alright, I ' m going. I just took a little detour when I saw There was something I could pick, just like that. Wait, I ' m coming, birdie. I see something to pick. Alright. I ' m coming. Let ' s go this way. Number two. To the right? There he is. No, that ' s not where I ' m going. Where Where is... He's over there. Okay. At the inn. The dragon inn. The green dragon. What can I do for you? How are you feeling? Delphi has asked me to check in on you. All the cures, you know, I'm starting to feel better, but a bit of Delphi's medicine won't do me any harm. Let's see how this goes. What have you done to me? Perhaps it needs some time to work properly. The last thing it uses more time is getting worse as the minutes go by. Achoo! I'm not getting better. Achoo! Go to Delphi and see if there's something she can do. Alright, Fosco. Achoo! My goodness, where is Delphi? Is she in here? No, I guess she never had the inn. All the way across town. Do I even have time to get there? The medicine you made didn't work. Oh dear. He needs a sour meal. Can you make one? Um, I don't think I can, but alright. Get it cooked up as soon as possible and bring it straight back here. Take the sour meal to Delphinia. Alright. That was a little quicker. Sour, but a tangy rhubarb. Do I have any in my storage? I might. Yes, I do. There you go. I'll go back tomorrow. Bring it to her tomorrow. Yes. Okay, remember to hit the like and subscribe button. We're gonna call it here for today, and I will catch you in the next episode. Please leave a comment down below how much you're enjoying the game, and if there's anything I can show you that I haven't already, I'd be happy to, and if you know any tips and tricks, please let me know, especially about cooking. Alrighty. You have a good one. Bye now.